Supervisor Groves, are you ready? Tina? It's 10 o'clock. 10 o'clock, we're going to call this meeting in two order and open session. Welcome to the May 15th Special Board Meeting. And Supervisor Groves, will you be able to...
Good morning. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of our citizens. One mission, under our power, indivisible, with every intention of doing so.
County matters, these items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department and member of the board or staff may request that in line be heard out of order. There is only one item, so looking forward to item 1.1. Acknowledge receipt of the assertion report regarding COVID-19 and authorize the chairman to sign a letter in support of a variance to accelerate pace of advancing through stage two of the state's pandemic roadmap. We will listen to our COVID update. I know there are people on the line as well as the phone, but we will proceed with our update first. Good morning, Dr. Richard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, as we're here to update the board on the completion of the assertion plan and then hear from our public health directors, health and human services director, and also now there's our doctor on the line. He'll be happy to go through the plan with you too and answer any questions you may have. If you listen.
Good morning, Liz Hamilton, interim Director of Health and Human Services and Office of Emergency Services. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and thank you, Dr. Herfindall, for joining us as well, and Public Health Nursing Director Marcy Kedzil, and a big thank you to our entire public health team. So we're here today to review our assertion and request a letter of support from the board. As you know, our assertion, our county plan, letter of support from the board and a letter of support from the hospital must be submitted to the California Department of Public Health in order to formally move us into the accelerated phase two, in which we can deviate from the governor's modified stage two. So since we met last Friday, our team has, of course, been meeting daily. We did complete our required technical assistant call with the state that included both our public health nursing director and Dr. Herfindall, members from CDPH, and reviewed our draft assertion plan. Before you today, in the plan, we have to satisfy approximately 15 indicators to satisfy the state and moving board. And I know that the plan is lengthy, the template that we had received just prior to our board meeting last week. We weren't sure what that format was going to look like. We received a 12-page document. There's at least 15 indicators that are inclusive of the epidemiological stability of our community, protection of essential workers, testing containment, temporary testing in vulnerable population. It includes our hospital capacity, business sectors and timelines, and then triggers for modification. Our county plan coordinates with the assertion very nicely. It includes, the county plan more specifically includes all our guidelines for individuals and businesses, what can and cannot open in phase two. I know that as of last night, there were 19 other counties that have submitted online. Those can be viewed online for those that want to see those. So I want to go to our county plan and looking at phase four, want to dive into what this means should you provide a letter of support and we move into phase two. We're really talking about how individuals that are over the age of 65 or residents with underlying health conditions, that they continue to shelter in place. Nonessential travel is strongly discouraged, so it's in alignment with the state. Residents can, of course, continue to participate in outdoor recreation. Employers in our modified or accelerated, apologies, stage two, we're looking at opening those low-risk businesses. In our county plan on page five, under specific type of employers, we're discussing the sectors that would be allowed to immediately open once this plan is submitted. That includes retail, included too, not limited, to bookstores, jewelry stores, toy stores, clothing, supply chain supporting and manufacturers that support those logistical sectors, personnel services, limited to car wash, pet grooming, tanning facilities, landscape and gardening, office-based businesses where telework remains strongly encouraged, but for those businesses that need to open their office because they do not have telework, they would be allowed to open outdoor museum or open gallery spaces, childcare. The two items that are, the state has provided guidance, but we're asking that may be more restrictive, is schools. We have already issued a letter from Dr. Herfindall to the schools that their in-person classroom remains school through the remainder of the school year. There's no change to that. Restaurants will continue to operate with takeout and delivery only. After a two-week surveillance period of expanded testing and no increase in case, we will then, as public health, with our health officer review for modification of opening to in-dining. That is our proposal and recommendation to this board. I want to highlight our trinitycounty.org website. I want to send an actual appreciation. I'm glad that Dan is here. He's worked, our IT department has worked with us very closely, our public health team and our Office of Emergency Services team, they're part of our public information office, and thank you for the work that you've done in making sure the information is shared timely with you and our community. One of the things that we added last night is a list of businesses who, 65 in total as of last night, likely has changed since this morning, who have submitted business plans that environmental health has been able to review and then issue a certification of compliance with COVID-19 guidelines. I want to thank those businesses for their cooperation and compliance, for their employees and the patrons. It's very important. Of course, we will continue to receive those and then update those to our website. We are still awaiting guidance in any kind of timing as to phase three businesses to open. There simply is just not information from the state at this time that can change daily. We know that that information from the state flows and changes daily. Right now, our focus is an accelerated phase two. And so with that, I want to invite Marcy Kedzil before you step away. Supervisor Groves, and I'm not sure if the other supervisor has a question specifically.
Okay.
Morning, Liz. Thank you. So I really don't see where we have the advanced phase two. I really can't tell the difference between your phase two and the state's phase two with no advance. So in the retail stores, you say they're open, but we don't say if they're open for in to lock-in business, which would be an advance. It just says they're going to be open, so that could just be curbside. The restaurants, of course, are closed and everything else, I don't see any difference. I don't see where we're advanced forward on any phase two.
I think you, Supervisor Groves, for asking for planning clarification. On page, or on page four of our phase two county plan, under employers, we are stating that physical distancing measures being adhered to, that owners and operators are encouraged to limit the number of staff and clients in the building at a given time. We want to leave discretion to these business owners who know their space and what safe and social distancing can look like. The onus is really on them to protect their consumers as they come in, their patrons as they come in. We have some are larger spaces, larger stores, some are very small stores. And so that is being worked out through environmental health directly with those businesses. And you're correct in that the governor's allowance for retail stores, curbside only, we are in this acceleration allowing for patrons to go into the store, again, reiterating that the onus is on that business to provide for safe social distancing.
So I would think we need to make that a little clearer in this. Unless I'm missing, that we say that we can go inside. And so is that the only advancement that we have over the standard phase two?
The primary difference between the modified and accelerated is moving from online or curbside only to allowing patrons into the stores that are open. There is not a large variance actually between the modified and the accelerated phase two outside of probably the dine-in restaurants being the largest distinction, which we are asking for two weeks of additional testing to modify that portion.
Okay, so the answer is yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Supervisor Moore. I think my questions were answered. That was one of my questions, curbside versus retail. And I would like it pointed out a little better so they know the retailer would have that discussion with environmental health specifically, that it's really up to their own best judgment how they want to handle that. Because it is confusing if it's curbside or not, but your explanation answers my question. And then I do have a question certainly on the two that aren't being at advance from a procedural level and just a curiosity level why we're taking that path. So I don't know who to direct those questions to.
Thank you Supervisor Moore for those questions. And you know, since last Friday when we met, as you're all aware, we've had two positive cases of COVID-19 in our community. Marcy will get into some of the details of why that number has reduced back to one. However, I think in the last week, the reality of that we have expanded testing with positive cases occurring or likely to occur, there's just a need to wait for better surveillance. And Dr. Herfindall is the one that I'd actually like to speak to specifically when it comes to restaurants and the concerns around there, since this is what he is attesting to, this is his health order. And I know he's having to take that question either now or after Marcy's report out. It's up to the board, chair's pleasure.
I can wait till Marcy's report out.
Okay. Marcy is going to provide a situational update. Of course, it includes conversation about positive cases as we slightly touch on testing. And more importantly, I want her to go through how we've developed our assertion and the matrix used in doing so.
Supervisor Moore says we need to present. So I know we're not in phase three yet, and it was kind of some general explanation in our county plan. My understanding, other counties have kind of, they're not moving into phase three by any means because we're not allowed to. However, they've kind of specified some other important points for those businesses that fall into phase three, whether it's, you know, salons, gyms, churches, bars, larger gatherings over 10. So would it, are we not going to specify more, or even though we don't have guidelines from the state yet, other counties have kind of cracked it a little bit, so we don't have to keep going back to the table with the state asking, okay, this is what we'd like to do for phase three. Still be gentle, but a little bit more specific. Is there a reason we didn't take that path?
In the assertion itself?
Well, that and your county plan.
On page five of the county plan, about midway through and phase three, higher-risk workplaces.
Excuse me, Liz, we're having a momentary technical situation. Can we just take a pause?
Absolutely.
We're not going to go anywhere as soon as this glitch is resumed right where you're at. Thank, okay. And I think public pools fall into phase three.
Really not ready yet.
Oh, we're not ready, but thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thanks. Thank you.
No, it's coming through those two mic conversations right there.
He's waiting for time. He's sticking with this.
So can you ask everyone to sign back in? If you have not signed back in, please do so. And Daryl, could you...
Well, what's happening is we're picking up a little bit of an echo from the sound system in the building and a microphone here, which the people online have to hear this microphone. So we need to turn the mics down a little bit here, and you can speak up a little bit, then they can pick up on this mic. But what's happening back here, you don't hear it up there, but there's an echo back here from these speakers. And it's just, it's an echo. So if you're, she can turn the mics down a little bit here.
We'll turn the mics on the dais down and we'll just all speak very loud and clear.
That will help a lot, so, thank you.
I think we all can take our volume up. If you were dropped on Zoom, please re-enter. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Moore. So to answer your question, it's not an exhaustive list in our county plan on page five, under phase three, higher-risk workplaces, although it did capture several of the sectors that you discussed. So examples including personal care, which is hair and nail salons, gyms, entertainment venues such as movie theaters, sports without live audience, and in-person religious services, which is churches, perhaps weddings. That's what the state has provided us at this time. And as they expand that list, we will expand it, areas such as pools. We're just waiting on the flow of communication from the state down to us on that expanded phase three and what that looks like. So I hope that that helped to answer your question about what is coming in phase three.
I knew that. I just have seen other plans of other counties with a little bit more in-depth description of when we hit phase three.
Supervisor Moore, so I'm getting emails that people can barely hear you and miss chatter, so you're going to have to speak up.
Okay. All right, so all, so you have...
Speak up.
They're on. Okay, sorry, no. Thank you. And I'll try to speak louder without yelling. So in other county plans, we've seen, in phase three, we've seen a little bit more description tailored to its jurisdiction in phase three, although no one's moving to phase three yet. And so looking at this plan, and I assume this plan along with the other documentation, it's turned into the state. So my concern is, you know, this thing is moving very fast. A lot of businesses in my district are very anticipated to move forward and nonprofits are, you know, the churches are ready to move forward. So I don't want to, I want to make sure that we're not causing undue delay by not submitting the paperwork we need to do or a little bit more description. So just have, that's my concern.
I hear you Supervisor Moore, and that's a great point. And I want to also maybe provide a point of ease is that the state is not having to approve these documents, we just have to submit for transparency. So if these documents need to be updated or changed with a newer version of a health order as we learn more information from the state and have guidance, we will update these. And we want to keep that really open working dialogue with businesses so that they know very clearly with a partnership with environmental health, when they get to open. And I know that Ms. Anderson is very engaged with our business community, and we do not, as you, want to cause any delay to businesses that can safely open when the time comes to do so.
Okay, thank you.
So Supervisor Moore, refresh my memory on here. Nowhere in this plan do we talk about resorts. And next weekend, I would anticipate two to, or we'll be conservative, one to 3,000 people coming into the Trinity Lake area in the resorts. Don't know what to do yet. And since we have no guidance here, what is the guidance for the resorts?
So I, I'm not sure Supervisor Groves, if I can answer that today in fullness. I hear that question. We've been asked that question. What I do know is that this plan, state's nonessential travel is strongly discouraged, but it's not prohibitive. And so where the state, this mirrors the state's language, it's that it's strongly discouraged. Our current health order in place limits hotel and motels to essential workforce and in-county residents only. When this replaces that, that falls away, quite frankly. And so...
So, I'm sorry to interrupt. So when this takes over, that falls away. So nowhere, are you saying that nowhere do we discuss what happens in hotels once this passes?
That is correct, and that's an area that I feel like we need to provide more information.
Yes, that's...
Supervisor Moore and Supervisor Finley, after Supervisor Groves has done just enough.
Okay, so yeah, that's, again, we're going to have a massive influx of people. All right, I'm done for now, then.
So kind of taking off Supervisor Groves' comment about hotels, lodging, I think it would have been helpful, and I don't know if it's on our county website, but the stages that the state has lined out. And if I recall correctly, you know, though the state has still encouraged just essential travel only, they list hotels and lodging in phase three for, you know, phase three hotel lodging is when they look at leisure travel and tourism.
Correct.
So there's this conflict from a hotel owner or resort owner. We're saying essential travel are not, you know, just essential travel is encouraged, and it's been lifted, but still hotels are in that phase three. So that clarity really needs, I think, for hotel owners or lodging or resort, leisure travel just isn't there yet.
Correct. And, you know, we do not want to get outside of the state's guidance. We have made it clear, public health, that we want to stay in alignment with the state's guidance. I know that tourism, Supervisors and Moore, so you're correct, it is listed in stage three. However, you know, within that, we have to look at our travel restrictions as they are currently, what our current plan looks at, and you know, maybe Dr. Herfindall can speak a little bit more than that, more to this subject. We want to keep our population safe. And I know that our lodging businesses, you know, want to open, and I don't know that I can answer that independently outside of my team at this moment.
That was my question.
This is probably more for Richard. Last week, we discussed gyms, whether they're very narrow with a lot of, a lot of people looking at it, seeing what's going on. Has that just been taken care of, or we're not working on that right now?
No, actually, that is in, I mean, it's in discussion, but it's in phase three.
It's in phase three, I understand.
Yeah, so that's some of the discussion we have with the doctor. But he's, mostly for him, he's more likely to stick with the phase three, so.
Okay. Plus, it's been worked out, guys.
And I have one more. I kind of...
Thank you for your patience. This is, thank you.
So as of tomorrow, the Forest Service is opening up many campgrounds in the area. And again, we don't talk about the private campgrounds. What's the, what are we doing with the private campgrounds?
Outside of reviewing that with my team, I don't have an answer for that, Supervisor Groves.
All right, I'm done.
So if I can invite Marcy Kedzil?
Good morning, Madam Chair and board supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to update you. Frustration around this is not lost on me. I am going to speak frankly with you. And once I'm done with my update, I will have Dr. Herfindall speak to the issues. So I really want to reframe this, that what we're essentially looking at doing is buying us a little space from when things open up to get a sense of what that means for the illness activity that could happen in our county. Because again, the repetition, the same thing from a public health standpoint with the experts out there, is that this is not like the flu, this is not like the virus that's seasonal. It is demonstrating that it is continuing as of right now. And what the experts determine is that until 70% of the population is immune, it will continue, either immune through getting it and becoming immune to it through antibody development or through immunization. With that said, looking at our unique situation in our county, the one constant that has not changed is our healthcare system and our essential workforce. And so what we're essentially doing is walking a tightrope. We want to open up in a safe manner because economic health is as important to our county as the health of our population. So I think what Dr. Herfindall and I want to communicate is that anything that has the potential risk of creating outbreaks, whether on a large scale countywide or community outbreaks, we want to prevent that. So one of the things we're looking at is, I hear you loud and clear, and there's no reason we can't address this, the issue of the travel. We're kind of in a difficult position because on the one hand, we have nonessential travel discouraged. On the other hand, we have resorts with the pressure of Memorial Day weekend approaching. Our position in public health has always been, nonessential travel continues to be discouraged. The decision that we have to make collectively is what happens if people from other counties come into Trinity County from, say, the area in other counties? This is a statewide pandemic. It is everywhere around us. We now have one case, and when I update you, I'll give you more information about that. And I'm going to explain the testing has almost doubled. So we want a two-week buffer to buy us enough time to look at what's going to happen as we incrementally open. So Supervisor Groves, very good question. To answer that question about why we're doing this and not this, why we're doing this and not this, it's because partly what the science tells us about restaurants and the ability for spread to happen in restaurants. And the other is how, let's open some things and get a sense... And the other is how, let's open some things and get a sense, now that we have standard testing, get a sense of what the illness activity truly looks like in Trinity County. Because we've been having a stay-at-home, a really effective aggressive strategy, people haven't been moving around as much. So let's open up slowly and safely to see what the activity looks like as we expand testing simultaneously. I'm going to let our health officer address more of that and some of his perspective on this. I'll move into an update, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Our testing numbers, so for the first nine weeks of this pandemic, we had 98 tests completed over nine weeks. In the last two weeks, we've added to those 98 approximately, well, the total testing is 179. So we went from 98 two weeks ago to 179 today. We have 44 tests pending, and we have one, one action, one positive in Trinity County according to the data that you look at from the CDC. And I'll explain why that, that we have one now instead of two. So we are on, we are on par with expanding our testing in a way that we had hoped to be able to really surveil activity and illness in the county. Regarding businesses and customers going into businesses rather than curbside, and I can let Christie speak to this more, but we have, in the Health Department, we've made arrangements for businesses to have a procurement mechanism for masking availability for all of their customers. And so we're standing that up. That's something that we're doing. I don't know if other counties are doing that. I'm sure they have some mechanism. But we're looking at how do we innovatively help protect the population? So we're making lots of decisions about that. With regarding the, let me just go into the methodology of the attestation. So the way I frame the attestation is that it's really the plan, a public-facing plan that tells the public how we're going to contain the illness, how we're going to mitigate the illness. If we're prepared to do that, was how we're going to broadly test to ensure that we're capturing sufficient numbers to really get a sense of, through surveillance, what's going on in our community. Our plan around those congregate settings and hospitals and how to protect those in our skilled nursing facility and work with our hospitals to ensure that our healthcare system is protected as well as our emergency medical systems. We have done that, and the way that we did that is really essentially, any kind of pandemic, anything that overwhelms the public health system and threatens our, the well-being of our population, there's a system in place, and we all know it, it's the emergency response system. And so, but for our public health department, I wanted to share with you that we've had, since I started three years ago, we worked on building out our Department Operations Center and what that would look like in the case of a pandemic. And so what we do is whenever there's an outbreak of something, we come together and look at, we do a threat assessment, right? So we did the threat assessment on this back in January. And so what we do is stood up our Department Operations Center, and we build that out. And that's a beautiful system. It works for any emergency, and that's why it's there. So what we do is based on the emergency, we build that out. We put in place operations section sheet, planning section sheet, logistics, nursing for contact tracing. So we have built that system out, and in the process of what we do within that system and working with partners, we do exactly what we've done in the attestation. We've built that out over the last 11 weeks, do my math, but since January. We've built that out and put all of these systems in place, not just for, we didn't do this for the attestation. We just put it all together in one document. That's why I could do it over a weekend, because we already had this in place. This is simply demonstrating to California Department of Public Health and to our public what that looks like and how we're prepared. So it is almost the public health business plan that's public-facing. We will continue to update that. There's a containment plan portion in that that I am continuing to work on so that we can get a little more detail, so that our public can see a greater degree of detail. And some of this is developed as we go along and anticipate some of the issues. And one of our mantras of public health is you plan for, and fire, all EMS systems, emergency preparedness. The mantra is you hope for the best, but you prepare for the worst. And that's what we've done throughout this whole event. And so regarding the explanation of the cases, so we did have two cases. The second case that we were notified was, was really kind of a shared case between Humboldt and us. So that case has been transferred to Humboldt because the residence, the primary residence is in Humboldt County. But we will continue to coordinate to identify, and we make contact with any individuals that may have had contact with this particular individual. And happy to answer any questions to Supervisor Morris.
Yes, Senator.
Thank you. And I know all of you have been working hard, and the community has been working hard with the stay-at-home order, and this is helpful for us to move forward. And I know you guys have really been working hard at increasing our testing, which helps us move forward in the eyes of the state. So I do have a couple of questions going back to your attestation form. And the first part, it talks about, you know, the readiness criteria, and it really opens up with the, our caseload. And of course, the state is saying, one case per 10,000. We all, all counties have to go down that road. We list that we have two cases in this form, which the state will review. And though we know we transferred one case to Humboldt, it is really their case. It sounds like the threat really isn't there for Trinity. So would it make sense to take that case out of this form that we no longer are responsible for?
So what I can tell you is the epidemiological stability. It's, in essence, it's really being able to demonstrate what our caseload is and that we can respond to that. Now that the case has been transferred to Humboldt County, realistically, we can in fact do that. However, there are counties, so what I want, the reason I want to frame it this way is because today, for example, today, we may have a positive case. I'd have to, this would have to be updated. So at any given time, this, before this gets sent, it could, there could be more positives. But what we have to demonstrate is that we have the ability to control, contain, and mitigate whatever it is. They give you a set number. However, there are counties that have done the attestation that have more, that have, those have been a lot of questions that have been asked and answered, what ifs? What if we have five cases? So that's the, why we have the constant communication with CDPH and being able to communicate with them on this.
And you don't, you don't know that we need to add a footnote that says this one case is Humboldt, so it doesn't hurt our chances of moving forward?
I will do whatever the California Department of Health asks me to do.
Okay. And then my other question actually goes back to restaurants. As I have quite a few restaurants, and they're all, have been, many have been doing curbside takeout and are eagerly waiting to adapt and modify their restaurants for in-dining seating. So I'm a little confused. My understanding, CSAC has been very involved on this, and we have meetings weekly. And last night, I was able to get even more clarification from them on the process of this, the form that, this whole package we're sending to the state. So my understanding is you and the doc can have certainly a lot of control at the local level when things change. And so I'm a little confused on the restaurant issue. We know Shasta County has opened up. Our folks are looking to get out of the house. They're done cooking at home. They want to go to Shasta County, likely, and dine in Shasta County. We're exposing people with that happening. And then, yep, our own restaurants aren't able to open. It's a hard case to make with, although I certainly respect the whole public health aspect. We're exposing people by people wanting to just to get out and go to Shasta County and dine, but they can't dine at our own restaurants. So I'm a little confused, and I'm certainly not the public health person, so I just need clarification.
So I think this is a really good time to let our health officer speak to the, to our board. And, Marcy, I just want to check, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you at all, make sure that any of the other supervisors have a specific question for you. So Supervisor Finley, Supervisor Groves? No?
I actually do. And perhaps it's the doctor. There's two questions that come up in the public. One is when someone is identified, is there a way to say it is in a certain area of our community? People, they're not asking for their personal identification to be revealed, but it would put minds at ease if, if someone knows what region of the county it is. Maybe they use extra precautions. So that was one. And then going back over to what you were saying earlier about updating, as we have more testing and more positives, there'll be levels of these numbers, some will be recovered. And I would think that that would help to prove that we are able to not only identify but move forward in our ability to ensure the public health safety. So we have one case literally right now. At what time do we move that person out of being identified as an active case and into recovery?
So that's, those are really good questions, Madam Chair. So we will ensure, the answer to your first question. We will provide the information at the time, under any given circumstance, that protects the public and is allowed under the law. So when we do contact tracing, we trace backward. And so it's not just about contacting those who have contacted the positive, it's finding out everywhere that the positive has been. Perfect example is when we had a measles outbreak. You send out press releases, you contact the public. If you have been in this store in this point in time, you might have been exposed. So there's ways, that's one example. There's a multitude of scenarios. But what I can tell you is that we will do what is necessary to protect the public while protecting the personal information of our public under the law.
So I'm not, can you repeat the second question?
Yeah, so as, as we have identified, we have one active case. At some point, that person rotates into a recovered stage. And so it's no longer an active case. So what is that timeframe? And I would think that as we have more testing done, there will be an activation of more positive cases just because we're surveilling. And so at what point do we put them in recovery? Because I would think that that would help to demonstrate the ability and the capacity of our county to protect the public, which is the whole reason why we have this situation right now and why we are limited on moving into the phases. We need to demonstrate that, yes, as a county, public health can. So we want to get people moved into recovery. So how does that happen? That's, that's the next phase. Once we identify somebody is patted, they're, they're isolated, they're sheltered in place, and then they're recovered. So we want to get those positives over to that recovered. So what does that look like?
So the California Department of Public Health, those reporting systems, we use CalReady, the CalReady system, and that's the case management system that we document all efforts into regarding cases and contacts. And so, Madam Chair, thank you. This is a good question because it gives me a chance to reiterate quarantine isolation orders. So when we identify someone who's asymptomatic, who's positive, they have to isolate, and they must isolate for two weeks. Same, or excuse, they're positive, yes, they have to isolate for two weeks. We monitor their symptoms. If they develop symptoms at any time during that two weeks, it resets a timeline. So that if they have symptoms, now they have to go at least 10 days from the point, from the day of the symptoms started to resolution of those symptoms. And they have to be three days without fever and fever-reducing medicines. So for persons with symptoms, the minimum timeline, timeline that they will isolate is 10 days from the onset of their symptoms. But they have to have resolution of their symptoms and be without fever. And all of those things, we monitor. So not for those people that, for those individuals that are quarantined or isolated, they're monitoring their health daily, and we're, again, determining, okay, at what point. So there's two timelines, 14 days versus if they're ill, the timeline associated with the symptom reduction and the things I just described.
Okay. I know Supervisor Morris has a question, but I, just a real quick follow-up. So as, as we move our tested positive over to recovery, does that help to establish the fact that we are, we have the capacity to not only monitor but to protect the public?
Yes, yes. Very good point. So what we do in CalReady, the system that's highly protected, that the state of California, the California Department of Public Health utilizes, we are in close collaboration with CDPH for any communicable disease. We close those cases out. So once they've gone through the quarantine, no symptoms, if they were, if they weren't tested or they were, it just exposed, or that 10-day timeline with all the symptom reduction and that, once those have been met, that's documented in CalReady, and we close that case. And so CDPH has access to that information. So at any given time, we know what cases are closed, meaning they've been resolved, or what are still open. So yes, there is a system for that.
Okay. Supervisor Morris?
I have some other questions unrelated to the restaurant question, which I'll save for the doc. Thank you for securing those masks that, I know businesses in my district who are ready to open, the non-essential retail, I think that would be handy for them. And then I just want to make it clear that the county isn't saying it's mandatory on any level.
Correct.
At the same time. But thank you very much for making that offer to those businesses. And then the other question I had from a constituent, they ran into somebody who's homeless. And are we part of the room key program?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
And so what is the, the procedure for someone to get through that?
I would, I would need to defer to Elizabeth Hamilton, right, Justice Director? That falls under the Social Service DOC and DOC, so I can't answer that.
Sure.
I do know in the attestation, we have to demonstrate that we can house 15%, and we're able to do that.
Okay, great. And then I can wait for Liz after we're done on that room key problem.
Okay.
Questions? So we'll go ahead and if you would like to introduce the doctor?
Oh, yes. Wonderful. So I'd like to introduce Dr. David Herfindall. This time, our health officer in Trinity County. Dr. Herfindall, are you on the line? Is he speaking? We can't hear you. Maybe you're on mute?
I can hear him a little bit. Is there a volume channel?
I'm sorry. Sorry, Dr. Herfindall, we can't really hear you.
Margaret, can you hear me?
Yes, Margaret, we can barely hear you. Barely hear you.
Okay. Well, I can hear Dr. Herfindall, so I'm wondering if it's, it's, it sounds perfect on the, on the computer.
Yeah.
I always, I always enjoy being heard. Thank you very much.
You are, you are.
So I believe Dr. Coons is bringing him in on his computer, which rings in an echo. So you may have to speak up, Dr. Herfindall.
Well, I'm confused. I didn't know if the board was on break or I see. Well, I'm confused. I didn't know the board was on break or I see.
We're just experiencing some technological problems. If you hold on a second, we'll try to cleave this up.
Richard, I can hear you the best. Can you hear me okay, sir?
Yeah, I can hear you, so I'll turn you back up.
Well, go ahead and start, Richard. I can see your right hand there periodically, so if I see you waving, if you put it forward and wave, that means I'll pause, that something is wrong. I would like to comply my remarks or start my remarks really, to start with the virus itself, and that will move into restaurants, and answer any questions there. And then leave a couple minutes at the end before we, I don't want to get leave without talking about some of the outside travel coming into Trinity County that might be. And I'd like to start the discussion just by commenting. Somebody sitting at the head table to the left of our chair who seems to be wearing a mask, thank you very much, whoever that is. You are doing your part to protect the other people in the room in case you are infectious. Congratulations, keep up the good work. We have talked about hygiene, hand washing, social distancing, and masks for some time. Those four issues, those four practices of washing your hands, screening for the antigen, social distancing, and wearing masks together, they could seriously have worked well in California. Having said that, only about 6% of people who come down with COVID-19 actually got that from the environment. Only about 6% of the people get infected by somebody who is infected and contagious, coughing on a tabletop or a doorknob or some other inanimate object, then somebody touching that doorknob and touching their mouth or face. By far and large, COVID-19 spreads primarily through respiratory droplets. Talking, shouting, yelling, singing, sneezing. Sneezing is the worst. The studies have clearly shown that given the right temperature and humidity and airflow, a sneeze or a singing or loud talking can carry those viruses.
Can you wave at your husband?
Oh, my mom too.
Okay, once again, if you can hear, we're having technical difficulties. We'll be right back.
Somebody text the doctor?
Yeah, I'll do it. Thanks, Marcy.
Would you like to use my cell phone to call the doctor?
He is continuing to talk right here.
Marcy, go ahead. I think that's a good idea. We'll just put him on your, if you don't mind, putting it near the microphone that is on. Can somebody let Margaret know we have the doctor on this call? Is that a blind thing?
I am, but I just have to. I find the library in here.
That's where.
I can't find him, so it's kind of.
Those are on the, I'm saying they lost connectivity in the boardroom, so hold on.
I want to let this, Tina.
Please wait, the meeting host. Hey, Doc, we're going to put you on. August, August. If everybody could just please wait, we're having technical difficulties. Thank you.
They might be able to hear you on that, that's on the cell service.
So we're going to, I think, try to call the doctor on a phone and then put him on the microphone and continue. Give me the answer. He did for a second. I'm going to leave it to you. Keep trying. We're going to put you on the speaker for the board.
Wait a second here. Okay, testing, what is this?
With his phone.
Talking on my cellphone now. I want you.
I think we'd rather have you on my cellphone because we're having a hard time hearing you. And put yours on speaker by the microphone, so we can all. Thank you, Christie, thank you. You want me to hang up?
No.
No. Hang up the Zoom call. There we go.
Doctor, we can still hear you perfectly. I think what I'm hearing is they lost internet connection in the boardroom.
Hey, Doc, I'm going to try it now on the cell phone.
So we can hear you on my cellphone. Can you terminate his, or you can. Will you turn off the Zoom?
Now I'm back on the phone, can you hear me?
Can I have your speaker? Yes, it's weak, but we can hear him. Darryl, can you pick this up? Go ahead, Dr. Herfindal. You were speaking at the time we lost you about the amount of people who have received it by respiratory compared to contaminations on the tables. You were speaking about the aerosol and the sneezing, and we lost you.
Okay, so I can barely hear, I don't know if that's you, Chris, or who I'm talking to, but I had started talking off about hand washing and screening for the antigen and distancing and masks. It has worked very, very well. Those words were taken together and have made serious impact in California. Having said that, only about 6% of the virus is transmitted through environmental touching. Somebody is sick coughing in a doorknob. Somebody is not touching the doorknob and moving that virus to their mouth or eyes. COVID-19 spreads primarily through respiratory droplets. Coughing, sneezing, yelling, singing, that sort of stuff. In fact, depending on the temperature, humidity, and air circulation, a cough or sneeze can move a respiratory droplet 20 feet, 2 zero feet. That's why, Marcy, it's not possible that we are not yet ready to have people sitting down in restaurants until we can be sure that the plan is in place and that the air flows are such and the culture in all the restaurants are such, that we're not to be unnecessarily exposing people to this virus. We believe that as more and more counties attempt and start opening up, then we are going to have over the next two weeks ample time to see what's happening, what's working in other counties, what's not working in other counties, and modify our behavior and then start opening it up two weeks from now if we can to do that safely. Marcy was also spot on. She talked about this virus not going away. It's hunting out there, it's still hanging around, and it's going to come back to stall. It can start relaxing and leading too far forward. It's going to come back with a vengeance. I'd like to have a conversation with one of my kids last night who's working in San Diego in the emergency department. And when she left at 10 o'clock at night after 12 hours of working, there were 12 people in the emergency department waiting to get processed for probable COVID. And there was about 45 people who were in hospital. These numbers are, like, tick up significantly, tick up and are causing problems. Now, it's going to be just related to San Diego. And as we move into a relaxed restriction, people are going to be doing things that promote the spreading of the virus. Just witness Siskiyou County. And I love that health department there, that the people in Mount Shasta in the last two weeks have been saying, it's like Fourth of July. Every day here, people are coming from outside Siskiyou County into Siskiyou County to travel and be in their trailers and enjoy the parks. And they will be bringing the virus with them. Take a look at Shasta County, another great health department. Having this rodeo with 2,000 people. We will be ready, I believe, in two weeks to have the necessary tests where we can reassess and if at all possible, open up our restaurants safely. That is our goal. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the restaurants specifically or about the respiratory spread before we move in the last thing that concerns me, the outside travel into Trinity County.
Christie, what I'm going to have you do, he can't hear us. I'm going to have the supervisors ask a question, if you would not mind repeating it. Supervisor Morris, do you want me to just go there? That would be wonderful. Hold on just a second. Dr. Herfindal, Supervisor Morris is going to address a question.
Yes, and Christie, you might have to, you might have to help. She was very hard to hear, even on Zoom, and I suspect that's probably being close to impossible, but I'll do my best.
Hi, Doc, it's Judy. I'm closer to your phone than at the dais, so hopefully you can hear me.
I can hear you excellent now instead of the Zoom, Judy. What's your question?
So my question, I totally appreciate what you're saying about, of course, keeping our community and county healthy and waiting a little bit longer to open the dine-in restaurant portion of our restaurants. My concern is, will we keep playing catch-up with these numbers? So we have one case now technically. They want, you know, hopefully we don't see any more within the next 14 days. This isn't going away. And so I wonder, will we ever be in a place that we can have in two weeks, restaurants open for in-dining seating? Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense. And yes, the answer to your question is yes. We will be able to do that safely once the protocols are in place, whether we have one, two, three, four, or five cases that are present. We'll be able to work with the state and do that. So Judy, the simple answer is yes, we will be able to do this if we can do it safely. It will not depend on the number of cases we have unless they explode.
Sure, okay. And then, of course. The state guidelines for restaurants just came out. I quickly went through those, but those seem pretty robust. Are you comfortable with those?
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question on this restaurant, and I don't know if this is for you or Marcy or Liz, but we put in our attestation form about restaurants being on a limited, opening on a limited basis. Again, back to procedure and process, does that harm us as we go to the state for final review? We won't have to go back to them if we open up more on the restaurants. Is that my understanding?
I believe, Marcy, I'm going to let Marcy answer that. I believe that is an incorrect interpretation, Marcy.
Well, he's going to have to hear you, so I'll get out of your way.
Maybe she can't hear me.
So I can hear you.
Are you there, Marcy?
Yes, can you hear me?
She's older.
I can, Judy, answer Judy's question if you would.
So I'm reading and getting another question.
So what is the question, Supervisor Morris?
Well, my question is on your form that you're going to submit to the state that we've limited schools and restaurants at the moment. My understanding from talking with CSAC is that obviously you and the doc have, can expand and decrease this thing as conditions change. My concern or question is, if we list those limitations as we go through the first phase of getting approval from the state, will that limit us? Will we have to go back and say, hey, we're opening up restaurants more? Do we have to go back again through the process?
So let me just clarify, the attestation, I feel like I'm yelling, but I want to be able to hear me. Let me just clarify, the attestation is the health officer certification.
For sure.
This California Department of Public Health does not approve our attestation.
I realize it's just a kind of a, we have to provide that to them.
Right, so within Phase Two, however we decide to move in Phase Two, we can do that if we attest to it. So I'm not sure I understand your question about, I'm not clear on the question you're asking about restaurants specifically, this particular question.
Well, because it shows, on that form, it shows a limitation of our degree of opening.
Correct.
And in two weeks, if things are going in the way we expect them to go, hopefully maybe in seven days, because we have one case already seven days old and nothing else appears, we could open into in-seating dining. Do we have to go back and make our case like this is what we're going to do?
To the state?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No, that would be the health officer's call.
Yes, and that's why I'm saying they, he or you have a lot of call in this and a lot of discretion and, so I just don't. What I hear from CSAC is slightly different, so I'm just verifying that we don't get hung up in a procedural process.
No, okay.
And Marcy, that was exactly the answer I gave to you also, that we can do that safely. We do not need to go and get blessed by the state unless the state changes the guidelines. This is within our power to do it. We don't have to go back and ask something really weird happening in California.
And Doc, I have one kind of question you might not have heard earlier, and I raised it. Shasta County is open for in-dining at the restaurants, in-seating dining, I guess. So in terms of talking about exposure, we're encouraging our folks to go to Redding and go to a restaurant. And then they come back to our county and perhaps, you know, expose our own folks in the community. So that's my concern with not allowing our, with our numbers not allowing our restaurants to open. Obviously, you have the final call, but I just wanted to make sure you heard my concern. Obviously, you have the final call, but I just wanted to make sure you heard my concern about we're, we're sending people to Chastity County. I know our people have already gone this week to go to restaurants in Chastity County. So, I just want...
Great, great question, great comment. Supervisor Morris, I hear you, I understand what you're saying. We, obviously, I am not encouraging people to go to Redding to eat. I continue to echo what Governor Newsom said, as we all do in the public health branch here at Trinity County and HHS, to discourage travel. I do not in my other streams recommend people driving from Trinity County to Redding to eat and coming back. Uh, but that's a great sequel into my, into the third concept I'd like to talk about a bit that also helps there is outside travel to Trinity County. Um, I am, I remain also very concerned with the large influx of people that may be coming to Trinity County to recreate, to camp, to open campgrounds, to fish, to do whatever. I'm very concerned when Chastity County has the rodeo with 2,000 people. I am very concerned when my friends at Mount Shasta say it's like 4th of July, every, every day there with all the outside people. If people do not, I have the new philosophy, um, you know, we have to sort of move from keep me safe, leave me alone, to focus of, we need to be keeping everybody safe, and that's who we're moving to. So, I hear you, yes, that could happen. We'll do our best to make sure it won't happen. We're just not ready to open up our restaurants yet, but when it's safe, we can do that and we share that common goal of doing that safely. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Supervisor Brown?
Well, Doctor, um, I've received numerous inquiries from constituents that are wondering if the mask policy was going to be made mandatory and, um, and what the basis is on that decision of highly recommended versus mandatory.
Okay, I was, I'm missing part of that. Someone translate that question for me.
Supervisor Brown is inquiring for his constituents, why the policy of not mandating masks and why only encouraging it. Is that right?
If, if the question is, if people are asking why that we are not mandating masks, that would remind us that if, as we take a look at, for example, in restaurant dining, that would be pretty hard to do. We clearly can be more restrictive than what the state of California is issuing. State of California, uh, is not requiring, that state health officer is not requiring masking. Other counties are requiring masking. It's unique to every county depending on what they're doing. That's certainly something, if we feel the need, or we see that masking would be helpful in preventing the transmission of disease here, I can write a health officer order effective immediately, and it gets bounced through our county council and can be signed and effect. We should be more restrictive or just don't see the need for it today. Could that change tomorrow or the next day? Absolutely, we have that power.
Doctor, this is Supervisor Groves, thank you for your time. As you alluded to, I would anticipate next weekend we'll see between 1,500 and 3,000 people coming to the Northlake area. Do you guys have a plan on how to deal with that?
Um, I think that question was asked already and answered. I think I heard people say, not yet. Um, but Marcy or Liz, I will defer to you.
Thank you.
Um, Doc, so, uh, this is Christie Anderson in Martin Hall. So, I think there's some confusion because we currently have a health order that bans non-essential travel in Trinity County, and that is more restrictive than what the state is worrying as strongly discouraged. Now, we need, if this current health order and plan replaces the existing travel ban, that puts us with, in line with what the state has, which is strongly discouraged. Now, where does that leave us? Because this is confusing for our businesses and confusing for me dealing with the businesses. Um, how, how do you want to proceed with it?
So, Marcy, I might as well, I, I, I'm assuming the board was able to hear that. I was not aware until earlier in this call when somebody said that once the state health officer dropped the mandatory, uh, restricted travel, then ours automatically went away. Again, we need to bounce that off our county council. I did not know that was automatic, and I had assumed that any health law orders in effect would stay the same until we reverse them. But I suspect this is gonna be something that we look into immediately. Margaret, do you have any thoughts on that? Do my health orders, I, I automatically get reversed when the state health officer changes hers, or if ours are restrictive, do they stay?
The board hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, Doctor, you're correct. If you have more restrictive than the state, they would stay in effect. Um, I've actually looked into this, and, um, any of your orders have to be actually, um, uh, affirmatively reversed before they pass up here. So, you will be, the order will stay in effect as long as it's in compliance with the state until you make a decision to reverse it.
Okay, I think we need to, uh, thank...
Answer the question.
Uh, I think we need, we need to discuss this a little bit, because I think we, we're all thinking the current plan would be replacing those. I think that would better understanding, so we'll discuss more.
Christie, there's a couple more questions.
Yes, and it can replace it if that's the decision of the health officer. There's no concern regarding that, especially if they're picketted or they conflict with each other, that's usually the recommendation, but we do need to take some action, so I would recommend a conversation on that.
Christie, just for your information, in the Phase Two, you do, you do say non-essential travel is strongly discouraged, so that, in fact, is removing it, isn't it?
Yeah, that was what my understanding is, and is, in this plan that you'll sign when you order, it took the 14-day quarantine away and travel ban, and we had just strongly discouraged.
So, Doc, um, I'm gonna reflect what Supervisor Groves and, um, CAO Republicans just expressed, is that it was all of our understanding that this current order and plan was gonna replace what was currently in place, which would remove that travel ban and 14-day quarantine and replace it with travel is strongly discouraged. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Correct, and so that would...
I would yield, I would yield to county council. I do not know the answer to that. I, I don't know.
And, and so, I can, I can answer that.
We can frankly and not concern county council, and we know how to do that.
Christie, ask him.
Again, so, the point is, is that any orders from the doctor cannot be replaced unless he affirmatively replaces them. By signing an order that has revised language, which is what the variance attestation document would, um, would, if it was directly on point, that would replace it. So, we would go from a mandatory travel ban to a strongly discouraged travel ban. So, I do want the, the doctor to make sure that was his intent.
Okay. I have a couple different, this is Supervisor Morris, Doc, back again. I have a couple other questions not related to the travel part necessarily. Um, we all know that churches are in Phase Three, and we're not there yet at the state. However, could churches, at least in youth groups, operate with 10 or less people in the meantime, or do we still have to stay within that Stage Three aspect?
If that's directed to the health officer, um, if, if, if the data is not allowing Stage Two or Phase Two, uh, then I'm not gonna break, we can't break what the guidelines of the state are, so unless it's there, and I didn't think it was, uh, we have to wait until the, those either get modified, which could certainly happen, or we eventually get into Three, which we will get there. That's my understanding. Uh, Christie or Liz, you're helping out if I'm wrong.
No, I agree, I just wanna double check, and then my, my second question, we have a lot of big events planned or trying to be planned for 4th of July. I don't know if they've consulted with you or Christie or Liz, whether it's 4th of July. I, that seems to be Phase Four, and that has not changed, so I just wanna see where we're at on that, if people are engaging any of you.
Yeah. Um, so, this is Christie again, Doc. Um, I'm just answering Supervisor Morris's question. Um, I have been in contact with both Alliance Club and, um, Trinity County Fairgrounds, and I, I think, I believe that you, um, got that message as well, and I did advise that it is in Phase Four reopening, um, and they seem to understand and be supportive of that. Now, whether that timeline, where that is gonna exist, um, I told them that is still unclear. Did you wanna add anything to that? Doc, did you hear, did you hear me?
A question, yes, I heard you. I heard your answer, and I'm in total agreement with, with what our, our director just said. Um, we don't have to crystal all. My guess would be that this reopening will go less smoothly in the state of California than we hoped for, and there's a possibility that the fairs will not, we will not be in that phase where fairs could, uh, open. Um, I do not know the answer to that. I'm just guessing, and we told them, probably not, but you never know.
Point of clarification, Doctor, this is Richard. So, we're still looking for some, some guidance on campgrounds, if the states open up the parks, are campgrounds eligible? We're also looking at marinas, which are businesses, which are opening businesses in our areas, so that means with the right precautions, the marinas can open, and then, what is it, guided, guided rafting? Those three, those three aspects.
Yeah, Christie, yeah, we'll have to take a look at it. I'm, I'm less worried about something for singing down with the river, um, on the outside, than I am someone sitting inside a church in a closed, uh, room singing and, and shouting and being close together. Now, there is some danger if you have two or three people in a vehicle going down the river. Um, as you know, Richard and everybody else on this call, when you first come down with the virus for the first two, three, four of the five days, you can have no symptoms, no cough, no fever, you know, the sick, you could be completely normal, and it's during that phase, it's a dramatic phase, and we're shedding a whole bunch of, of virus, so there's risk. The question to me is, would I take a rafting trip, uh, down the Trinity River, and I love rafting and fishing? The answer is not a chance would I do that.
Um, hold on just a moment, I, I believe Supervisor Chadwick has a question.
So, we appreciate, um, you being on this phone call today, and we understand, you know, your personal preferences, but each one of us holds to a, a large body of people that put us in this position, so I'm gonna, um, just express from my community, um, they've been very patient and kind, and they've been overwhelmingly, um, able to provide the necessities to go along with what we've requested them. That patience is wearing thin. People are getting to the point where, um, they're concerned about, uh, not being able to afford to keep their businesses open once we do open them, if it's prolonged. There's an idea out there that the, um, the summer would be a better time to have the viral load exposed to us because we are healthier, we're outside, uh, the vitamin D, recreating in the garden, versus being in, in the fall and the winter when the, uh, viruses are complicated by influenza and pneumonia. So, I, I know you're not exposed to as many of the public as the rest of us who are elected are, but our constituents have been amazingly patient and amazingly gone by the rules, and I am just letting you know, um, as a supervisor, that we are, we are beginning to see a, a wear on that, and I'll speak just for myself, I don't wanna speak for the other supervisors, but, um, we need to be able to see the light at the end of the tunnel, and right now, the tunnel just got longer. So, I appreciate, we all appreciate all the hard work, we know that we have the best team in the region, maybe the state, and we do appreciate that, but there's the other side of it. So, I just wanna express that to you. I'm not asking for input, I, um, appreciate you letting me speak plainly.
I, I, I would like to respond to that because I hear what you're saying. Thank you very much. I understand that this is a combined effort. Politicians and the subject matter experts need to stand shoulder to shoulder and do what we think is best. My job as health officer, public health department has lead agency for this, and HHS is to present the facts, the science, the best predictions, uh, and then you folks, the politicians, are the ultimate elected officials who make, who make the decisions. Uh, we give you our best ideas and our best science. Some of the times we're right, and some of the times we're wrong. I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate you being up. The only thing I disagree with is that there's never a good time to get this virus and develop immunity to it, because that means people are gonna be dying, uh, and I do not believe the science is there that says better to get this virus in the summer than in the fall. It will be complicated in the fall for us, but if you get sick and die, you're dead.
Okay, so, um, as a supervisor, and I, I think I, I don't wanna go out and say I represent everybody, but it's our understanding that this is not in, within our control. So, Margaret, can you please speak to that? Do I have that wrong?
So, you are somewhat correct. Um, the, the document that's being sent to the state is a document from our health official. Um, the board has the ability to join in and write a letter of support, if that's the board's pleasure, uh, or the board doesn't. It's my understanding the state doesn't want to see, uh, the local government has been consulted and approved, um, but the actual document does not have your signature and would not have your vote on it. So, if, the, the health official would have the ultimate say in what it does contain.
So, is there a way for the board to encourage, um, even more accelerated opening?
Absolutely. We have the option of moving forward at, at different rates depending on the science. Uh, this attestation that allows us to move forward is a health officer-driven attestation. If we don't have this and don't get a letter of support and don't move forward, then by default, we go back directly and do what the, what the state is, is doing, and, and there's nothing wrong with that. We think we could just move faster forward with our unique situations if we get the attestation and, and, and do it together and work together on it.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna look to the board real quick, and I, I believe we have consensus that, yes, we wanna go forward with it, but I would like to just, by a nod of the head, know if, if you would like to see it even encouraged to go at a stronger acceleration. I have a kind of procedural question.
Yeah, I guess, okay. Okay. Okay, so Supervisor Chadwick just addressed the board, and she, she wanted to know if the board would like to move forward in support of the current attestation, or would like to see a more accelerated version. Is that correct, Bobby?
Yeah, we'll accept it. I, I'm, I can't speak for the board, but I, I think we're, we'd like to, of course, go forward with this, but also encourage an even faster path. But I think Supervisor Morris has something, and I don't wanna speak for the board till I, you know... I, you know, I want.
If I, if I could jump in, I think it'd probably be appropriate for us to do public comment before the board starts debating, and this might be a good opportunity to, to let the public start commenting.
Okay, Supervisor Morris has one question real quick.
It's really a clarification question, not a comment that was said two seconds ago. So this form that is being presented to the state is going to have the doc's signature. If the board wanted to move forward and the doc disagreed, that's, that's a different view in terms of having the public health portion of this really make the final call. So we don't get to say we want to, I mean, we could say we want to see seating dining, but he may not sign that form, and then we're kind of stuck. So maybe that's a question for Margaret, if, if you can, because there is a little bit of difference from what we walked into this room, understanding.
Supervisor Morris, you summarized it perfectly, which is, this is a document that's established by the health director. If the board is not in agreement with it, your decision is to not sign a letter of support, which means when it gets submitted to the state, likely it will cause some problems because it doesn't appear that the county is in agreement about how to proceed forward. If you make proposals to the health officer, which you're entitled to do, this is the form for you to say, we would like, you know, seating dining, and the health director does not agree to that, he does not put it in his attestation report, and if there's nothing sent to the state, we are at status quo, which means we don't get the acceleration, but we stay the process of, of the beginning, Stage 2. And then we follow along with the state without using the acceleration process. So you are correct, this is, this is for you to give your thoughts to the health official, but it's ultimately a health official's decision about whether we meet the criteria to move to an accelerated Stage 2.
Thank you. I'm going to ask our IT and Tina, are we ready, and do we have the capacity and capability of opening up to public now?
Wifi is back up, so anyone that got off the wifi should be able to reconnect in here. Based on Margaret's voice, it's going to be loud, I think we should do this before the comment.
Okay, so wifi is back up, and we are able to hear you, Margaret, so Dan, our wizard is saying we can go for it, so Tina.
So raise your hand if anyone in the public would like to speak in the chair of the call.
Well, I'm going to actually have Tina, I'm going to ask Tina, because that way I don't have it on Zoom in front of her. Tina, would you mind calling our?
George Bates.
George Bates?
This lets us, so if you can call on 778-0239, we can share a lot better conversation, I think.
Okay, hold on a second, did you get that phone number? Right? Right?
It's all Zoom, it's all the same thing, whether you're on the phone.
Do you have a caller number? Can we see a caller number?
You should be able to click, click the mute button down in the.
George, there's a call-in number on the agenda for today. If you could call in on that, then we can circle back to you. We can't call out.
It will show up, if Tina just asks it.
I, I'm not hearing you answer, I don't know if you could hear me or not. We're going to go on, we'll, we'll come back to you, George. Tina, can you call in?
Brian Sinelli. Brian? Sinelli? Sorry about the last name. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sinelli? Excellent. So this is Ryan Sinelli, I'm the owner of the Lakeview Terrace Resort and president of the Visitors Bureau. And just wanted to speak today a little bit about, you know, the role that the Visitors Bureau has within the county, and speaking from lodging owners. Basically, if the plan submitted to the governor has no mention of the lodging owners or accelerate our opening, I feel it's a big mistake. The Visitors Bureau and other entities are committed to the financial health of our county, and the money from the TOT are dedicated to bringing more tourism into the county. The TOT money from the lack of occupancy in the lodging facilities will reverberate through the operations, and the lack of funds will slow the momentum that we've been building. When I got to Lewiston just over two years ago, it was a different place, and the businesses were closed. Since our arrival, the resort's been brought back to life, and we've doubled the occupancy from the best years of the last order. The Lewiston Hotel is back open, was thriving before the virus. Jeannie and Mike opened a new jewelry store, the Plug and Drug and Smokehouse is back open, and I'd really ask you to knock stop our progress. You trusted us to bring this beautiful and deserving community back to life, now trust us to keep it safe. We have, we as business owners have to face liability on a daily basis, and we make our decisions based on our best efforts and knowledge to mitigate potential risks. We're now educated enough to understand the situation and act accordingly. This is our rights as business owners. You basically don't have the right to shut us down, it's been decided in court that this is unconstitutional. I've submitted a plan to the Board of Supervisors and Health Department that was well thought out, will mitigate the risks associated with the virus, and it was superior to the Health Departments, which we filled out to get certified. No one has taken the time to respond or reach our microphone. Lodging owners shouldn't be singled out as they open malls and rodeos and chassis and campgrounds. As we turn people away from here, all they're doing is camping out by the lake and booming off in the town. I'm wondering how this is keeping them out. This is creating a health and safety issue in our county, as there's no bathrooms clean or supervision, control of social distancing. If we have them at the resorts, we supervise and make sure that they're properly cleaned, social distances, and intended to. Public safety is an issue of us not opening up. We as owners will not risk the lives and safety of our guests or employees, this is our responsibility as business owners, and we're much better educated and proficient to make the decisions best suited to our businesses. We are, however, willing to work with you in any way that you deem necessary, but you can either give us direction or let us move forward on our own, but either way, please make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I, I do not have a email from you, I can't speak for the other, so if you could please resubmit that to me.
He sent.
Okay.
And it has gone to the, me and him have played folk tag for a while, but it has gone to the Health Department, and I'm not sure what's happening.
Okay, I appreciate that, I just, I didn't want him to think that I ignored him. So did Mr. George Bates come back on the phone?
Yes, I keep trying to tell you, I am already on the phone to you, it shows up 778-0239. My bandwidth before, the voice doesn't work, but you may get me on the phone.
We're hearing you, but you're echoing, so if you could turn your Zoom off temporarily and just talk to us over your phone, or turn your phone off, because you're, we're getting you doubled.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm muted, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hopefully it's pretty clear, okay. I wanted to go back over a couple of things here. Well, let me, let me turn my sound off on this, because it's driving me crazy. There, okay, so I don't have a long way coming back. If we start at the beginning of this last year, we come up with one of the things you talk about, and I'm personally calling it a myth, but you talk about protecting, the ability to protect those at high risk from COVID-19. Okay, well, here's the deal, you know, the doctor just said it can spread up to 20 feet, okay? Now, let's go over what's happening, what you're not doing. There's not one store in the area that requires that both the sellers and the customers wear masks. So how are you protecting me as someone, how can I go shopping? You haven't provided any way for me to go shopping safely. Do you get that? And it's not just me, it's a good portion of your county that is seniors. And I don't see that, I mean, it's like, you say you're going to ability to protect seniors at those at high risk, no, we can stay home, but why don't we get our food? Okay, number one, let me go through these, see where my folds are. Okay, under page three of the health opening thing, they talk about no more than one COVID case per 10,000 in the past 14 days prior to basically submission date. Okay, well, there have been two tests that tested positive. So this is right on your thing, now you may move one of the tests out of here, but it's still tested positive in Trinity County. I don't know how you can accelerate anything if it says right here, you can't do that. And, you know, it says, you know, the answer is, the population of Trinity County is roughly 13,000, you know, you go and talk about the prevalence and da-da-da-da-da, and, and like here, you say two places, we're up above it, it says no more than one COVID-19 case per thousand people in the past 14 days. So it'd be nice of someone to explain how you're getting on that one if you want to accelerate, because I just don't see it.
George, your time is up.
Okay.
Your time, your three minutes to answer, thank you. We're moving on to the next person, Tina?
Thanks for answering.
Kelly Gant?
If there's any use of profanity, we will have to disconnect the telephone, so I would ask that you mute your sides, we appreciate your frustration.
This does go out publicly. Kelly Gant?
Yes, so I'm going to represent the chamber, and I'd like all our chamber members online to go prior to me, and I'll recap, please.
Okay, we don't have the list of who is a chamber person, so we're just going to continue to move on down the list.
Okay, thank you, and then come back to me, I appreciate it.
Veronica Kelly?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I want to thank you for taking the time to go through this with the public, and I want to thank all of our local health officials for all of their hard work, especially Christie Anderson, and for providing information that has helped us at Weaverville Douglas City Parks and Rec, create some safety protocols. Weaverville Douglas City Parks and Rec has created and has an Interstate Pool Operators Collaborative, working to share and create ideas that are very aggressive in safety programs for aquatics. And I wanted to encourage our local health officials to consider that there are some businesses that are labeled Phase 3, however, some of their programs could be considered for Phase 2, water safety lessons, you know, swim team activities with the limited modifications of guidelines that are in place. You know, that falls really under childcare, a lot of parents rely on that for their, for their children during the summer months when they're at work, and now that offices are opening, there is going to be a greater need for that. So I'm hoping that they will consider organized programming such as that to be allowed, because the CDC has determined that chlorinated and well-maintained pools kill the virus, and with aggressive disinfection and sanitation, that can also help mitigate any issues limiting the number of people. UV rays are also considered a virus killer. And we are very blessed in Weaverville and Trinity County for the Hayport Pool and Loudoun Park Pool and many other pools to be outdoors, which does mitigate the issue of transfer through the air. So that is something we just wanted to encourage our local state officials, health officials, as well as the board to consider, is looking at businesses and working with them that have Phase 2 programming, that could be considered in this attestation that you're going to be sending in to the state. And we've worked aggressively with this collaborative to create, that exceed the safety requirements of our local officials here in Trinity County, and we will continue to do so because protecting our youth and our community is of the utmost priority for Loudoun, for Weaverville Douglas City Parks and Recreation. And so we would really like to just consider, have the local health officials consider some of the programming that could be included in this language, because we don't want to lose that. So that is really what I wanted to say, and I wanted to thank all of them.
Thank you, Veronica. And just a reminder for those on public comment, this is your time to speak to the board, it is not a time for the board to have an opportunity to dialogue. If you would like to follow up with any questions, I would suggest that you contact your representative and start a dialogue there. It is really not a time for us to speak back. This is your time to express your opinions and your thoughts and any solutions to us. Thank you. Tina?
Margot Gray.
Margot Gray?
Hi, that's me from Trinity House Resort, and I do agree with the fact that I think people are going to come anyway, and it will be good for us to make money from them, to be able to control. Some of us that have outline resorts, I think, are a little bit different than hotels in town, and our guests are not true transients, they're the same families that come back year after year. A lot of my guests have been coming 50, 60, 70 years, and they love Trinity County, they want Trinity County to be healthy, and I'm just trying to figure out what to tell them, and hopefully we're going to be opening up to non-residents in this area. I think there's thousands of doctors that are disagreeing with the mask and gloves and staying home and sanitizing, and I'm hearing that that lowers your immune system, which is not what we want, we want a strong immune system. So getting out and being out and about is strengthening our immune system. That's all I have, thank you. Thank you for opening this up to everyone.
Thank you. Allison Smith? Allison Smith?
Hi, yeah, it's been really interesting listening to all of you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, I think of all the things from listening to the doctor and the comments, one really simple thing that I would really like to see us doing is requiring masks in public, in all the restaurants, or in, in the places of business, because I can relate to the frustration of the more vulnerable population, that just feels like they're being kind of forgotten. And so I can understand, you know, how exciting that is, and I don't think the science is strong enough to encourage the herd immunity idea at this point, and, you know, even, I think that in the end, we, we are susceptible to getting this virus, regardless of whether we're wearing masks or not, but I think our likelihood of this is of getting it as, all getting it at the same time, you know, at a slower pace of it happening, would be mitigated by the use of masks. But until we kind of ask, kind of mandate it, I think it's not really going to happen, especially up in the Northern California communities. And I'm hoping that if we all do that, we can deal with the incoming tourist traffic that we're getting in a safer way. At least if people were coming up here, if they had to wear a mask when they went into the holiday market, or any of the stores, that would really help what's already happening that we can't control. So I'm kind of looking at mitigation at this point. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Kelly Gant? Kelly Gant, it looks like you're the only one waiting to speak.
Oh, ma'am, Chair, if Kelly wants to wait for the chamber members, I do have a letter from a chamber member. Thank you, she's a chamber member.
Ms. Gant, please, hold on, Supervisor Groves is going to read a letter from the chamber member, thank you.
Okay.
All right. I, Ruth Hartman, one of the owners of Cock Creek Ranch, would like to stress on behalf of resorts in Trinity County, that we are a different criteria than- of resorts in Trinity County that we are a different criteria than hotels and motels. The majority of us are located in remote areas outdoors, which recently the CDC has recommended that we all get some fresh air. Personally, our cabins are located on 17 acres scattered through trees and streams. The cabins are all individual and at the minimum 50 feet, 50 feet apart from each other. We can clean, we have a clean policy that was uploaded to certification for COVID showing, uh, top to bottom cleaning, our staff, guests, and cabins and lodges. There are plenty outside tables for guests to eat at practicing states.
Safe.
These are our guests who come back every year, so we are doing everything to keep them safe in UV lights, from UV lights to sanitizing phones and masks, providing them with personal masks, hand sanitizer, and a card that reminds them of the symptoms of the virus. We have signage posted everywhere from CDC and OSHA. Horseback riding is automatically six feet due to the length of the horse. These are our family businesses, and you're not going to stop people from coming to Trinity County. They will still come to the campgrounds and camp. You need to stop being afraid to put some face in the people of Trinity County. You need to look at the stats on actual deaths versus the cases. It is not like the Spanish Flu of 1918. Please, please, resorts and your open of Trinity County. Thank you. Ruth Hartman, owner of Cock Creek Ranch.
Okay, Kelly Gant.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kelly Gant, I am the president of the Trinity County Chamber of Commerce, and we represent many different, uh, business industries that are affected by COVID-19 and this upcoming plan.
Just a minute, just a minute.
I was disappointed in the plan. When I read through it, it's just a rehash of the state's four-phase plan. I didn't see very much effort put in to identify Trinity County as being unique, that our situation's unique, our, uh, demographics are unique, and our travelers are unique. So we aren't Shasta, we aren't Yuba, we aren't Sutter, we aren't Placer County, and so this one design fits all just doesn't, isn't appropriate for Trinity County. Then, our business owners are professionals. They deal with the public all the time. I found it a little insulting that this plan treats them as if they don't care about keeping people safe. I think every one of our business owners, it depends on tourism, they depend on guests showing up, and they're going to do everything in their power to actually keep them safe. Uh, like Keith mentioned, up in the North County, it might as well be summertime up here already. Uh, because people don't have any place to stay, they're camping out around the lake that doesn't have any sanitation, uh, facilities, and they're going to come. There's nothing that we can do to stop them. Uh, if we want to keep our guests safe and our customers safe and our county safe, I think the best thing to do is to allow our lodging owners to house these people in a safe and clean environment. Many of the lodging owners have presented very detailed plans on how they will keep their facilities safe. Uh, like, uh, Ruth mentioned, we aren't motels mostly. We are, uh, resorts with cabins scattered over acres of property, and we can do the social distancing. A lot of people come up and all they want to do is a place to stay, and they're going to go and spend the day hiking. Um, and, and you need to look at their plans. I know that there are quite a few of our members who uploaded plans on the application, and, um, they need to be looked at and reviewed with the lodging owners. Uh, the, like, uh, Judy Morris, Supervisor Morris, mentioned, the Shasta County restaurants are opening, uh, sending people in Trinity County down to Shasta, and then they come back. I know this is a little different, um, but I think we need to really look at that, uh, and then the impact that also has. Um, other notes, so, uh, our, our main request is that, uh, when we look at this plan, we really write an accelerated plan in there. We identify lodging because it's not mentioned at all in this.
Kelly, your, your time is up. I'm, I'm sorry, I have to cut you off on that.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
So my, yeah, my last point was that we're all going to have to live with COVID-19 for decades, and we might as well learn to live with it now.
And we have no one else. So hearing no one else in the public, any other supervisors have any, any else from their constituents? Having not heard anything, I'd like to bring it back to the board. Did you have something?
Just a question when you're ready.
Um, so what I would like to know is I, um, how you feel as a board on, there's a couple points I think we should try to include. I know, um, Judy probably is going to say something about restaurants and Keith about resorts, so I would like to open up to a dialogue on the board to, um, have feedback on exactly moving forward with this support letter.
Um, sure, I mean, uh, you're right, I'll have something about restaurants. I would, I don't want to hinder the delay of submitting this plan, what has been presented, because that causes more delay. Because if we were to, my understanding from Margaret, if we were to insist that we do in-seeding now, the doc may not sign off, or Marcy, um, according to the parameters they have to view this situation through. However, I would just really like to see, um, our restaurants open with the modifications. The state has issued pretty solid guidelines for restaurants to open, um, and as quick as possible. Now granted, I, I understand if we have a huge outbreak, that really puts us in a different scenario. Um, and then the other thing, I think, um, I'd like to see, I mean, Supervisor Groves has asked this a few times, and, you know, there, motels and, uh, hotels are listed. They don't really specify resorts, and I'm a little disappointed we don't have a, a little bit more in-depth information presented to us on that, on the resort issue. Hotels and lodging, obviously, as we've stated, is in Stage Three and is, at the moment, for essential workers only. So, um, I'm not thrilled with the in, uh, not having the in-seeding dining. Am I saying that right? But I don't want to hold something up either, because ultimately Tuesday, the doc could say, hey, we're ready to go with opening restaurants open more, and I just don't want to hold something up if I understand what Margaret said earlier.
Okay, um, I'm going to jump to Supervisor Brown. Do you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, um, I'd like what Supervisor Morris had to say. I did get some requests about, uh, especially the resorts that have check-in, check-out policy without front desks. They felt that they were in a eating situation where there's no contact being done. Also, the restaurants that have outside dining, um, extra space and increased ventilation, they felt that they were also in a situation to have safe dining opportunities. With the effort of not trying to slow down the process, um, and be supportive of the letter, but also, uh, share our, our desire to have the Health Department and the doctor look at the ability for some of the restaurants, for all the restaurants, to present plans that would be supportive of safe, uh, dining in or outside dining. And as Keith or Supervisor Groves stated, um, if force services opening up public campgrounds, you know, that's, uh, situation is kind of already out of our hands. I doubt that the campgrounds are going to have sufficient methods of maintaining, um, extra, um, cleanliness with their, um, restrooms and showering facilities. So if that's already happening, um, there's a certain momentum, certain momentum that's going to be occurring already that is, seems like it's outside of our control. And so it, it makes more sense to conform a little bit with the momentum that is inevitably going to happen and allow our businesses to, um, continue making a living. I think there's ample support to move in that direction. And, uh, I think that's the, the main basis of, of how I feel, and, um, I know it's, it's definitely divided. I haven't, I haven't seen as much division between the liberals and the conservatives that are all subdivided into, um, into each other's groups. So I, I would say, you know, if we have access to increased testing, um, down the line, that's going to be able to, to handle a potential increase of testing needs, or if we start to experience an out, of an increased outbreak, maybe we could reassess at that point. But if the testing resources are available and the campgrounds are opening, and the resorts feel that they have plans and infrastructure in place that, that make them, their customers feel safe, um, I would be hopeful that, that would be listened to and acknowledged by the Health Department. And, um, if that's something we can formally request to look into over the next week, say, hey, do you think this is an option to have by mid-next week? And we'd love to support this current letter and keep the momentum going, but we also feel this is incredibly important to look at and, uh, keep, um, the opportunity and discussion moving forward.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes, I support Dr. Herfindall and everything that he's presented, and we're hoping we move in that direction. He's the doctor that we're talking about. My experience has been very limited to a very narrow type of virus, and welcome to a world I live in and enjoy.
I, of course, will support moving through this standard form so we can at least have a few businesses going. I, I would hope that we have a more complex plan or, um, by, by next week. There's a lot of things we don't talk about. I assume that we're going to have, I, I got a little lost today on if we try to move some of the Phase Threes into an advanced Phase Twos, if we can do that without going back to the state. I'm guessing that we can't, but we have, in this, in our plan here, we don't talk about resorts, we don't talk about river rafting, we don't talk about marinas, we don't talk about campground. And in my world, that's, that's 70% of our businesses. And so, as you heard through the people today, they're frustrated, and I think some of these resorts have come up with very complex plans that I think would be hard for them to do, that they are willing to stand up and do it. We somehow have to foster that along and give them real timing. Here we are seven days away from Memorial Weekend, and they don't know if to tell their people not to come or not. And, um, there's a lot of specifics can, issues, you know? Can somebody rent a house better? You can't tell them yes or no right now. So I think we need to deal with those details rather soon and publish something for our resort or owners to hang on to and, and look at it. They may not like the news, but at least knowing the bad news is better than just fumbling along through this. We are going to see an influx of people next week. There'll be a lot of people. I'm throwing out make-believe numbers out there, but we will be packed. We somehow need to come up with a plan to deal with that, or it's just going to be Wild West time. So I would hope that more work gets done in the very near future to have some answers by, by next week sometime. I know the staff's been working hard on this, and, and, uh, and the state has, you know, keep things complicated and in flux, but this is, you know, a tough time, and we're just going to have to knuckle down and do something.
So, Marcy, and I'm not sure if I'm going to ask either one of anybody else out, but, um, I believe there's consensus to go forward, absolutely, right now. What I'm also hearing is a specific request for, um, the restaurants, the resorts, the There is also the river rafting. Is there a way that the board, that input that you've just heard could be compiled and, and negotiated to move forward today, or would that, would we have to wait? And how long would that wait be to come back? I mean, I know the doctor, as Supervisor Finley says, he, he gets to make the call, but I think he understands where we're coming from. He also hears that the influx of people are coming, and I do agree that it'd be better to contain the influx than just have it, um, a free-for-all.
Yeah, um, thank you. And let me, just for the Health Department, and I'm going to let Dr. Herfindall to chime in, but I, I've heard you loud and clear. I've heard the constituents, and I agree with you, they've done an amazing job. Our public has been amazing. And so, um, I think we are, I'm not sure how to proceed, except I know that for us, I think we need to take this back and have a, a, a discussion with our health officer. I want him to address, um, uh, the board on, on some of his thoughts, um, because it is a dance, and we want to work with our constituents and keep, um, our population healthy, but also, um, I've heard everything here today, and, and it matters to us, what we've heard.
I appreciate that. I, I have a follow-up, and I know Supervisor Groves does. Is there a timeline that this document has to be submitted by?
There is not. The only, the only, um, issue really with time is that you can't go into Stage Three at this time in your attestation, but it, I guess reality is if we delay, uh, long enough, then we'd be going into Phase Two anyway without an attestation, so.
Okay, so I, I have some follow-up, but I want to give an opportunity. Supervisor Groves and Supervisor Morris both have indicated they have questions. Go ahead.
Um, I'm sorry, I forgot that one thing I'd also highly encourage, and you said you're working on it, is I do understand the mask issue. A lot of people in the county don't take this seriously enough, and anything we can do as a county to have masks available when people enter stores, um, have posters in stores saying, please wear your mask when you come in. I think if we make it convenient, I think people will be more apt to, to, you know, I do it just like anybody else, that I walk in and forget my mask and go, well, I'll just go in and grab something, so. I think if, if we have some program, and that would really help people that are nervous about finding the stores, as, uh, George talked about, I think that would be a beneficial program that we can move forward on.
Thank you, Supervisor Groves. And I did want to, um, I, I think it was Ms. Grant that was from the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah.
Yes. I heard her loud and clear, and, um, I agree that our businesses are amazing. Uh, one of the things we're doing that I mentioned earlier is we are making masks available to our, all of our businesses in Trinity County, uh, because we, we've heard them loud and clear. We know they want to protect, um, their, their, um, clients, and so we are making, we have 2,500 masks. We're making arrangements, it might be 25,000, I'm sorry, I don't remember, um, but we are going to have, uh, a continuous availability for masks for our businesses.
Marcy, how does somebody get ahold of you to say, hey, I have a business and I need X amount?
You know, I'm going to let Kristi answer that question.
Before that happens, I didn't want to cut you off. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think last meeting you said 2,500 you have to go out to businesses at some point, so. some point, so that's great. I guess my question is, my understanding is that I would hate to see this, I appreciate you taking our input of what we've all said, and we've been saying, so, you know, that's why the restaurant thing caught me off guard. I don't want, me personally, don't want to see our letter or our application be delayed. I mean, over the weekend, you know, we're going to keep seeing people go to Shasta County because they're more open, and then I would not like to keep our retailers at curbside level. Oh, talking to Mike, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. So if you were to turn this in, have the discussion with the state, oh, it's Friday, Monday, typically it turns around fairly quickly, is my understanding, with this package that you have a dialogue with the state with. Is that correct?
Supervisor Morris, we've already had the conversation that we're required to have. We've had our technical assistance call with the state, Dr. Herfindall and I, they've given us guidance. So whatever we complete and finalize, that's what goes to the state. Dr. Sonia Angel, the Director of California Department of Public Health and the state health officer, will review this, and then once it's posted, then it's, that's it. So that's essentially. That's my question. Once he reviews, what's the time period turnaround?
You mean from the time we complete this?
Yes.
A day?
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, and then, nothing prevents you or your team from bringing back these concerns we've raised for resorts or restaurants. We can keep moving forward addressing those issues. Do I have that right? Or am I, no?
See if I can get a point of clarification here real quick. Once this, the plan that you're turning in just says essentially that we have the capability of handling an influx up to a certain amount, that you said with the homeless and with the hospital, so if the doc decides on Monday to open up a little bit more, we don't have to do anything more, except the doc says we can do it. Is that correct?
So in the attestation, they ask for what we will open and how it differs from the state's roadmap.
So that's in this plan, but we can continue to loosen up without having to resubmit an entire plan, can't we?
That's correct. Up to Stage 3.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to jump in and say the same thing, but Marcy answered it correctly. All it does is capable of complying with all of the extended Stage 2, which means it's at the doctor's discretion if he wants to loosen it up even more beyond what his local rules are. So my recommendation, and I appreciate the comments about wanting to loosen it up faster, but it is not to send a letter of support on the vessel if it doesn't go forward, that all that's doing is limiting our ability to open up faster. The recommendations that we're hearing from other county councils and from the state is that get into Stage 2, extended Stage 2, and then start lobbying to move to Stage 3, and lobbying the state to get into Stage 3 faster. That's the best way to get us where it sounds as the public is, and the board is wanting to go, which is faster into Stage 3. That's going to involve us having communications with the state, because from a county perspective, we're not limiting that at all, except for some minor delays in order to make sure everyone's safe. But other than that, we can't go into Stage 3 until the state opens that up.
Right, I just didn't want this letter, this package, to be delayed more, and that it just keeps cascading delays.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that the board and the board understood that we don't go through this whole process again to go to open up, to do in-dining. We don't do that again, that's a simple, doctor says it is, we're clear to go. This states it, we can go, we can take, everything allowed in Stage 2 at a faster rate.
I agree. What I was hearing, perhaps the suggestion of delaying our application, if you will, for lack of a better term, to address some of these other issues, I didn't think that would be the best approach if we all want to move forward, is what I'm trying to get some clarity, and you did, so thank you. And Margaret did.
Yeah, so we can do that, I'm sorry. If this is submitted, we can go back this evening and discuss, and if the doc agrees that something else needs to be opened up, it can be done because we've turned this information in.
Right, thank you.
Supervisor Finley.
Richard, if you could contact the Shasta County, they have a news release, and find out whether their in-dining is really open and whether their rodeo was approved to go on, and clarify that to your supervisors, please. Rodeo was not approved.
Right, but it did go on.
It did go on without the, without the approval of the health officer or the county support, and.
It did, excuse me, but it did have the OES support. The sheriffs, I know.
Which, of course, controls the health officer.
I don't know.
No, yeah. And then from what I saw on the news this morning, people are already entering, the news, for example, they had a report showing people eating this morning at 8:00.
Okay. So with all those comments, I believe I'm ready to, I move to support whatever they need from us.
Second.
Pen, go forward. Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Chandler?
Yes. And I would encourage, from everything that you've heard, that we have a board meeting on Tuesday. I don't know if it's asking too much, whatever the doctor's comfortable, but I would remind you that we have people coming, and we don't have places receiving financial benefit from that, and they're here. So the resorts, I'm specifically talking about in the North State. So.
That's it. Adern.
Oh, do you want me to address the mask?
Unaderned.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we're going to address the mask for those who are listening and didn't hear.
Okay, so part of the requirement for registering your business plan is praying out and hanging up the masks are encouraged in this facility sign. Also, we have been taking requests for masks. We only did receive one mask request, but we're planning on the following week going business-to-business, checking through the signs, providing those masks in person. I do want to really stress that we have only, we do, as of this morning, only had 65 business plans, and some of those were Candace growers, and they, and they have licenses, and they took photos of them hanging up the signs and doing those things. So we're missing a lot of businesses, and we have done a lot of outreach this week. That's what this week has been about, was outreach to the businesses. So I would heavily encourage businesses to get on there and request masks if you want speedier or expedited masks, but we will be going around business-to-business this week, or this next week.
And then any business could just call Environmental Health and say, hey, I need 10, or.
Or email through the.
Email.
Real.
Email would be better. Okay, perfect, thank you. So now we're really adjourned, 12:18. Thank you.
Thank you.